Good evening. It is now five o'clock and we're getting ready to start our Redwood Thomasville City Board of Education meeting at Thomasville High School Library. I'd like to call it two meetings or we do have a forum. We got Jim Davis, Vice President, we got Taylor Williams, Miss Rita Nichols, there's our newcomer, and glad she's here, Miss Tiffany Jemberger, and myself, Marshall Pritchett. I'd like for, I can tell Jim Davis, but Mr. Jim Davis do the indication.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Please continue to be with our students as they're on summer vacation and our teachers and keep them safe. Bring them, help bring them back in one piece. Please continue to be with this board and help lead us, guide us, and direct us in the best decisions for the school system. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Now we're down to the approval of the agenda.
I would like to recommend that the board approve the agenda. You have a copy in your packet.
You heard your recommendation coming from our acting superintendent, can I get a motion?
I'll say no.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me, we need to make a amendment to the agenda. We're gonna have an executive session right after this meeting. So we want to add that, so we're gonna change the agenda. You don't have to stay for that, you don't want, you know, after that meeting, you can just eat and help, you know, for Mr. Ford, who want to wait for it. So can I get a motion to amend the agenda to add the executive session at the end? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Down to the approval of the minutes.
Okay, you have a copy of the board work session, May nineteenth minutes, and the regular board meeting minutes, May twenty-third, and you have an amended copy of those that Miss Q handed out. Make sure that you have the right ones, and you also have one for the special call meeting for May twenty-fifth. I would ask that you approve all three of those minutes unless there's any corrections.
You heard your recommendation coming from our acting superintendent, can I get a motion?
No.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
All right, we're down to financial report. This way you want me to stand?
Yeah, come on.
Oh, this way?
Yeah, come around this little bit.
Good afternoon there, bud. Gonna give you the financial report for end of month, May twenty-two. You should have this in your packet. Start with some snapshot information. The total payroll for the month was low, eight hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Total accounts payable, four hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. Of that, the board's portion was three hundred and seventy thousand, local school, ninety-three thousand. The board's portion was slightly higher than normal because we did make another payment to train as they're finishing up our energy upgrade project. Next page, looking at some of our fund balances. Overall fund balance for the system is about five million dollars. The board's portion of that is about two and a half million dollars. The special revenue makes up eight hundred twenty-one thousand dollars of that at the bottom, and then, of course, our capital projects makes up another seven hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars of the overall five million dollar fund balance. So page three, they're looking at the analysis of general fund. How are we looking in relation to our one-month operating balance? We're at two point seven seven months operating reserves, and the general fund is looking well, still in the green. Our operating year-to-date reserve is around nine hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. So comparing our general fund, the next page there, to where we were last year, we're about a half a million dollars more currently than we were last year. But also, we're slightly down, about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars more than we were last month. We had some big expenditures come in, and we're spending some of our advancement and technology funds that's making our general fund balance boost up, so we have to spend that money before the end of this September. All right, next page there. Comparing us over the last three fiscal years, the general fund balance compared to the last three fiscal years is looking well. The trend is still following the trend of the last three years. Of course, January, we hit the big spike because we divulged our Avalon tax in, and then we started trending off downward. We have been trending off downward slightly, and then again, compared to last month, we did take a slight dip. I don't predict the general fund to go below around two million dollars or so. Right now, we're at two point five. Looking at that next slide there, we're slightly below the trend line. Trend line has been trending upwards towards three billion dollar mark, but we did take a slight dip down. But everything is looking good in the general fund. Comparing our year-to-date expenditures on the next page there, we are spending about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars more this fiscal year compared to last fiscal year. And that's making up a hole, and that is a whole lot of extra grants, extra state funding and things like that. Overall, the general fund itself is not spending more money. We have more money state funding-wise, so we're looking good there. And then, when we look at that expense by percentage breakdown, around seventy-six percent of our expenditures are going to be instructional services, instructional support services, and our auxiliary services. Now, our auxiliary services is all transportation and C and P. Now, of course, we all see what gas prices and diesel prices are right now. Projected for next year, the auxiliary services percentage is gonna go up a whole lot. Just throwing a number out there, thinking about our transportation. Beginning of the year compared to now, transportation-wise, we were spending about roughly four thousand dollars a month on diesel. We're up to almost eight thousand. And that's just with prices, as things go up, you know, you have to bust the keys and everybody, so. Just throwing that out there, next year, that auxiliary services amount and food costs too is gonna go up. It's gonna also increase, so it's always gonna hit us pretty hard. That's my update, cool one? Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ford. You gotta answer the question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I recommend that we accept the financial report as given by Mr. Ford.
You heard your recommendation coming from the superintendent, can I get a motion?
I'll say no.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Down to superintendent's report.
Hey, I have copies, I'm gonna let y'all take one and pass them down. It's lengthy, but I will be quick, but I want to update you on a lot of exciting things in our school system. First of all, on May the thirty-first through June the third, the Thomasville High School varsity cheerleaders, with Miss Doggett as their cheer sponsor, and the Thomasville Middle School cheerleaders, with their sponsor being Miss Beth Williams, attended UCA Camp at the University of Alabama, and I wanted to brag on the awards that they received that night. The high school received numerous awards for the whole week, but each night, they received a spirit stick, and that kind of seems silly because that's what they're there for, is to do spirit, but it's hard. Camp is hard and they're tired and they're worn out, so to get a spirit stick every night is a task, quite a task, so that's wonderful. They received first place, we all jumped up and down and squealed because we got first place. They were camp champions in the cheer routine, they were awesome. And how many cheerleaders do we have in all? Out of, in our group? It was twelve squads. So out of twelve squads, they won the camp championship, so we were proud of that. They got fifth place in cheer, fourth in overall game day, and then we had Madison McCreary made the semifinals and the jump off, if you've not seen that girl dunk, you need to go and watch the video, she's awesome. And she was also named UCA All-American. Marley Davis, one of our senior cheerleaders, received Pennant Forward, and that's a leadership award, and she was also invited at the end of camp to try out at the end of her senior year for UCA staff, so that's an honor also. TMS has a young squad, but they were all energetic. I think they got a spirit stick their first night, they were really excited to be there. They got top ten in camp routine, a spirit stick each night, and then their captain, Madison Webb, got Pennant Forward Leadership Award, so they did awesome also. I want to recognize Luke Stevens, a rising senior at Thomasville High School. He went just recently, on June fifth to June ninth, to Washington DC, and it's an honor that he represented not only our school but the state of Alabama because only eight students were chosen for this program, and I've looked through all the application process. It was quite a chore for the things that he had to do, and then he got chosen. And the 4H program is called the CWF, it's the Citizen Washington Focus. Like I said, the process was rigorous and only eight students out of the state of Alabama got to go, so we are very proud of him for representing not only our school but our state. On July the eleventh, the THS basketball team attended camp at the University of Alabama. I think Mr. Fullington will tell us a little bit more about that later. I wanted to introduce some new people in the room, and when I call their name, if they'll just stand, I told them they didn't have to make a speech tonight, but we just want to put names with faces and meet people. Mr. Eddie Armstead, we are so glad to have you, Mr. Armstead. He's our new principal at Thomasville Middle School. Miss Chelsea Doggett will be the new principal at Thomasville Elementary School. And our new CSFO, Miss Angelica Gibson. Thank y'all for coming tonight and being present. We are gonna have a site safety survey done on all of our schools, our campuses, our SRO, Mr. McNair, Mr. Sims, Mr. Fullington and myself will be involved in that. It will be on June twenty-ninth and thirtieth, and I've asked Mr. Sims to briefly tell us about that survey that we're gonna have.
You wanna go back here or I need to come up front?
You can come up front. We need to be able to see.
I'm not getting on camera.
Want the mic?
No, I don't. I need the mic, but I don't want it.
So our site survey is going to be a comprehensive, two-day undertaking, but it's gonna be more than two days. We're working with a consultant group that I'm familiar with, they're called K-12 Safety and Security. It's a new organization, but they're spearheaded by a gentleman with over twenty-five years of law enforcement experience. He's been an EMA director, he's been Fire Department Assistant Chief for the twenty-five-plus years. He's also been a local school department chief as well, so he's got a lot of different irons in the fire, so to speak. As he says, he's a cross dresser because he does law enforcement, firefighting, and EMA. Anyway, he brings in a wealth of knowledge, and what he's going to do is give us an outsider's perspective on things that we need to look at improving from a safety standpoint. Now, we've done a great job over COVID as far as working on the safety standpoint, as far as masking and hand sanitizers and things of that nature. But one of the things that we're lacking in a lot of different areas is security. Gates, doors, things of that nature. So he'll come through and he'll actually look at every campus. He'll look at the elementary school, the middle school, the high school, and he'll also do the board office. And he'll also take a look at our school safety plan. We have a comprehensive district plan, and we'll do some updating to that and making some recommendations that at that point, we can bring to the board to see how we want to proceed for. But ultimately, it's just an opportunity to see where we are and what we need to help make our schools safer moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Absolutely.
That was a great segue into my next point. When I interviewed for superintendent, I made some promises that I'm going to keep, and one of them was that I want to have some committees with each board member serving on these committees, and one of them is gonna be safety. So I'm proposing that we form committees, and I want board members to think about which one fits their expertise, and they can get with me, and I would like for each month, maybe they give an update on their committee. So we'll have buildings and grounds, and that will be our safety part that Mr. Sims just talked about. We'll have an academic committee, we'll have athletics and clubs, and then we'll have policies, which would be procedures also, and then we'll have finances. So those are the committees that I'm going to propose that we form, and then each one of you will be on those committees. Last of my report, I have some updates that I want to be given, and I ask them to be brief, but I do want you to hear from them first. Our interim THS basketball coach, Mr. Fullington. Give us an update.
Okay, I'll come up here like Mr. Sims. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Sims, our athletic director coach Elliot, Ms. Morris, and the board for giving me and Ryan the opportunity to coach these young men. You know, I played basketball in high school and in college and coached for eighteen years, and the career path I chose didn't allow me to coach anymore. But now I'm in a position where that can happen. And my passion for coaching and for young people has never left, it's always been there. So thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to work with these young men. Update where we are. We started practicing Tuesday after we got out of school, got out on Friday, started practicing on Tuesday. Thomasville basketball's been taking it on the chin for the last couple of years, and there's a lot of reasons for that, but primarily there's a lack of fundamentals for basketball. So Coach Anderson and I have been working really hard on the fundamentals, passing, shooting, dribbling, those kind of things. So we've had nine practices since then, and the guys have a thirst for the game. You know, they've been soaking up everything that we've been trying to teach them. They want to be good, they want to be better, they want to get Thomasville basketball back to where it used to be and on par with our other sports here at Thomasville. So we've had nine practices, every practice is getting better, and we just finished today some playdates for games. We played nine games so far this summer. Playing in the summer is something that these guys haven't done in the last three years. So we've won, out of the nine games that we've played, we've won five and lost four, so we're pretty pleased with that. We faced some pretty good competition. Our first playdate was down in Grove Hill. Our very first game, we played Jackson, who I think beat us like a drum last year, and we ended up just losing by ten. We were actually beating them, I told the coach that, hey, we've only had four practices. We were winning, and so he started pressing us, and we haven't worked on press or anything. So we lost to them by ten, we lost to Sumter Central, who was a top-four team every year, and then we won a game down there, can't remember who we beat down there. Then we played, playdate, as Ms. Morris said, we went up, took the boys to the University of Alabama. They got to see the campus, they got to watch University of Alabama basketball players practice. They really enjoyed that. We played some good teams, Wilson and Sylvester from North Alabama, who we competed well with, and then we also won a game up there, and then today, we won all three games against Sweetwater, Al Johnson, and Linden. And I'm pleased with our progress, they're getting better and better every time we step on the floor. Trying to do the things that we're asking, and as coaches, that's all we can ask for. So we're pleased and we're happy with the direction that the basketball program is heading. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
It's gonna be going in good direction.
They're working hard.
And I should have said Mr. Anderson's not here because he's at conference.
That's right.
Because he was invited and he said to call him, so. To be the best, you gotta play the best, right, Mr. Anderson? Mr. Fullington has promised me a state championship, so I'm gonna hold him to that. He didn't say how quick. He didn't say how quick he could get it, but he promised, I'm not gonna forget that. He did tell me that in my office. So now I'd like to have a THS football update from our interim head coach, Lynn Anderson.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the board, Ms. Morris as well. I want to thank Mr. Ford, you know, for his time with us here. I mean, dealing with you has always been terrific, you know, real professional, and we should have went forward, we should have gone forward. As far as football goes, two weeks ago, we put out on social media, you know, the plans going forward. So last Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday were our first three workouts, and we got our maxes and, you know, to give us a base to start from, and I had a really good response, very pleased with it. You know, we have forty-five different players, nine through twelve, come and get maxes. And right now, I expressed to them when they got there the first time, you know, the June workouts are voluntary. We'll start mandatory in July. We've been averaging anywhere from, you know, thirty to forty every Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. The, you know, the energy level has been terrific. You know, I think they're buying into what we're trying to get them to learn. You know, it's definitely a process, you know, we're installing some things as we go. But, you know, I agree with, you know, kind of what Ms. Fullington will say, Coach Fullington. You know, these guys are, they're hungry for, you know, everything that we're throwing at them. You know, they have a, you know, great mindset, and of course, I've dealt with a lot of these kids and, you know, these players through different sports, and, you know, I think we're very fortunate, the type of players we have. We have good, you know, good students, good athletes in our school system. We all share athletes, and, you know, they'll go from, you know, basketball, well, they go football, baseball to basketball. We got, you know, several three-sport athletes, and, you know, it takes a lot for someone to put the kind of time and energy they put into it. And I tell them, I told them today, matter of fact, you know, this is a good a group as far as what they do, where they come down, they're not wasting their time, they're not just there just to be a part of it. And, you know, from what I'm seeing so far, you know, I'm very pleased and excited, you know, where we're going. We're gonna continue to work out Monday, Tuesdays, and Thursdays throughout June, and then we'll start the mandatories in July. We have, you know, we're in the process of scheduling some seven-on-sevens for later in July, once we kind of feel like we have, you know, the offensive plan in where we can go out there and execute it like we want to. But other than that, just really excited for the opportunity. You have any questions?
How many seniors are there?
Seniors, I don't have an exact number. I think we had eleven that were there during that, during last week, but, you know, I'm anticipating there's some more. There's, I know there's at least ten other players that have had other conflicts as far as been on trips and things of that nature. So I think, you know, we're gonna be around the fifty mark when we start in July, is what I'm anticipating, and I have a better idea of exact before the numbers.
I appreciate you, you have any questions?
You two have me excited about the upcoming seniors.
I am as well.
Thank you, thank you, Coach Anderson.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. And welcome to principals and assistant principals who stood up, and do y'all want to have anything to say before we go? Miss Doggett?
Doggett.
Thank you, thank you for everything, now we get the set agenda.
Hey, you have a copy of the agreement, the contract agreement that we're proposing with Ryan Law Firm out of Tuscaloosa. You've had a chance to read over that, and I would ask that the board approve that contract agreement.
You heard your recommendation coming from our acting superintendent, can I get a motion?
No.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. She knows. Down to board policy review.
Okay, and please note, when we do the board policies, this one is a review, which means we're not voting on it tonight. The first one about the students and the graduation requirements, we will need you to read over that and ask any questions at the next board meeting because we'll need to vote on that one in July if that one changed because that is a state change. Number two, we're gonna review that one as long as necessary, it's a big change with our parent organizations and school support groups, and that's board policy nine point one zero. I'm not gonna say we will exactly vote on that, we may even have a work session on that one. Yeah, all the different, the different clubs, and so that's not one that we'll do quickly. Mr. Sims put a lot of thought and effort in that and did his homework, so if it takes us two, three, four months or a year, we're okay with that, we want to get that right. So even if we need to have a work session, invite Mr. Sims and some other people, we can do that, it's just for your review.
Invite the CSFO.
Of course, of course.
Because she's gonna, she wants to have the money. Put down to the minutes.
Hey, you have a copy of the personnel action sheet. I'm going to break that into some sections. Section A, I would ask that you would approve the two resignations listed on your action sheet.
You heard your recommendation coming from our superintendent, can I get a motion? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. She knows.
Okay, we're on to B for employment and positions. I would add, I recommend that you approve all forty of the recommended rehires and new hires.
You heard your recommendation coming from our superintendent, can I get a motion?
I'm gonna have to abstain from this.
You just wanted to stay for one item, one, it's all.
Just one item, thirty-one.
Okay. We got, just Davis is staying. Can I get a motion? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. She knows.
Okay, we're on to C. We have eight voluntary transfers within the system. I recommend that the board approve those transfers.
You heard your recommendation coming from our superintendent, can I get a motion?
No.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay, and D, employment and supplemental positions, you see two there. Would be our interim head football coach and our interim girls' basketball coach. I would ask that you approve those two positions.
You heard your recommendation coming from our acting superintendent, can I get a motion? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. She knows.
Okay, and E, employment and temporary summer positions. We left these off, it was unintentional last time. We have to have a nurse, and then our mental health coordinator is on campus near summer school. So we've added our school nurse and our mental health coordinator for our temporary summer employment. I ask that you approve those two.
You heard your recommendation coming from our acting superintendent, can I get a motion? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. She knows.
And letter F is leave request. Just to remind you, we do have two employees on loan to the State Department as ARI staff, regional staff members. I ask that the board approve those two leave requests.
Heard your recommendation coming from our acting superintendent, can I get a motion?
Second.
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 Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay, and then the last item is G, our volunteers that work with different athletes and athletic programs, clubs. There are six of those, I would recommend that the board approve those six volunteers. I would recommend that the board approve those six volunteers.
You heard your recommendation coming from our superintendent. Can I get a motion? You're gonna stay on that page, so. I have Mr. Taylor abstaining. Can I get a motion?
To move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Now, what do they pay the supplement?
They are volunteers. They do not. They don't receive, they don't receive supplements. I would agree.
Okay, call in favor, raise your right hand. Is unanimous?
That's not that complete their action sheet. Okay, so we're under, okay, this is the board policy that we reviewed last time. This was 7.2, 3.1. The time and effort that Mr. Ford presented last time, and you have a copy of that. I would recommend to the board that we approve that board policy change.
You heard your recommendation coming from my acting superintendent. Can I get a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay, under field trips, on your agenda, you see one recommendation to approve an overnight field trip for the THS varsity volleyball team, July 13th through 15th in Tuscaloosa. There'll be one added. We have one added tonight that I have signed for your approval. The girls' basketball team would like to take an overnight field trip to Faulner and Montgomery on July 1st and 2nd for camp. So we want to add that one in also. So I would recommend that you approve those two overnight field trips.
Can I go on with it?
The first one is the volleyball team. They're going to Tuscaloosa. And the basketball, girls' basketball, they're going to Montgomery, to Faulner.
How many girls?
The girls' basketball?
How many girls? You got two shepherd runners? You heard your recommendation coming from our acting superintendent. Can I get a motion?
To move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay, the D, child nutrition meal prices. I recommend that you approve the proposed revision to the meal price increase for the 22, 23 school year.
You heard your recommendation coming from my acting superintendent. Can I get a motion?
I say move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor, raise your right hand. Let's get a cheap price. Considering.
To get a good meal, yeah. Okay, we're down to E. You have a copy in your packet of the handbook, the parent-student handbook that we're proposing for the 22, 23 school year. I recommend that we look over this. It's in draft form. And any changes that we want to make, that we bring those up at the board meeting on July the 19th. And then we'll get those included and vote on it before we send that off to print. So it's really not anything to.
Not a whole bunch of changes.
It's not a bunch of changes. But we do want you to look at it with fresh eyes and catch things and ask questions for sure at the next meeting. So we'll move down to scout, salary schedules on F. I recommend that we approve the proposed 22, 23 scout, salary schedules. And they will include the minimum 4% state raise on those.
You heard your recommendation from my acting superintendent. Can I get a motion?
To move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Did they cut? I focus in on them too?
Yeah.
You get a raise too?
All right, call in favor, raise your right hand. Is unanimous?
Okay, we're on G, board matters.
Okay, this is board matters. Oh, can I get somebody to make a recommendation from the, from the relevant meetings dates for the Thomasville City Board of Education? Get one of you guys to make a recommendation.
I'd like to recommend the approval of the scheduled meeting dates from July 2022 through June 2023.
Recommendation, can I get a motion?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think one of these sounds gonna be on the 13th reason that because of Christmas and everything. Call in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we're down to election of board presidents and vice president. I'd like to make a recommendation to nominate Mr. Jim Davis as our president for the next school board. Can I get a motion for that?
Want to move?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor, raise your right hand. Congratulations to our new president, Jim Davis. Can I get somebody to make a motion for the vice president?
I'd like to make a motion for Mr. Marshall Pritchett to be the vice president for upcoming school year.
I'd like for somebody else to, I've declined that vice president.
I would like to recommend Mr. Taylor Williams to be our vice president for our upcoming year.
You heard the recommendation from Mr. Jim Davis. Can I get a motion? Second?
Second.
So any discussion? Call in favor, raise your right hand. We'd like to give everybody a chance, you know, to sit in the seat. So that's why, and Mr. Taylor needs to experience it. When Mr. Jim Davis is not here, he's, he'll be the one to lead the end. Now we're down to status questions from the board members.
Any questions from you?
If you'd like to say anything. I'd just like to recognize Mr. Ford for a job well done. I'd like to just say that this young man has carried himself well in this community. And I think he has done a great job as our financial officer here at Thomasville City School. And we'd like to present him with a plaque.
And thank you, Ms. Calhoun, for making this plaque for Mr. Ford. And we thank him for his time here.
Show me the.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right. Thank you.
And there are some refreshments over there for you and your guests.
Thank you. I've enjoyed my time here, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Do we have any immediate questions? At this time, because.
Yes, sir.
You can say.
Yes, stand up.
Strike, strike down there.
Yes, sir.
Can the general public ask a question?
Uh, yes, sir. Coach, depending to the agenda, yes, sir.
Well, it's about the division.
Yes, sir.
We can't hear about the work. Is that okay? Make that say.
Yes, sir.
I want you all to please listen. Because we, we don't, I, we don't have a clue what you mean to say at that point. We don't know what you're voting on and who you're voting for. The least we can do is get an understanding as to what you're voting for. My phone's ringing, so I mean, somebody's trying to vote. I got nothing for you. If, if we have to do anything, let's, let's do it right. Everybody got into this. And when you pray, make sure you ask him to guide you. Don't just come up and say some mere words and walk away. God is listening, and God is real. I want you guys to know that. I, I love Thomasville High School. I want you to know that. I don't wear this hat for nothing. I wear it for a reason. I want you guys to know that. Please understand that. And make a few phone calls, and I guarantee you, somebody will listen. So please pay attention. Do what you are required to do and what your job is requiring you. I'll, I'll get you some voice, Coach, don't you worry about it. Some big ones, some tall, good-looking players, whatever you need, we'll do it. Y'all must stand up. And we made it from the bottom line heart. We love all of you and do what you gotta do to make a difference. Thomasville High School. We can't say we can't go down together. We gotta go up again. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jim. For them words, what I'm taking. Now, we didn't get ready to make a recommendation to go into an executive session. We're gonna go out so they can eat their refreshments over there. So I would like to make a recommendation to go into an executive session. Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion? Second?
Why, why are we going to executive session? Maybe you get a reason to speak.
Speak, Charlie.
Let me, let me say, because it's required in the meetings. I can see you scribbling on the pad over there. So I assume you're taking notes for the minutes.